Presentation of the year. It is our eighth budget presentation and we've also had two workshops with the with the board. And so this is the, tonight is the culmination of many months of work on our budget. And a lot of the information being presented or actually most all of it. Now, the public has seen in the last couple of presentations as this budget has come together. But this is for the public tonight. And so I'm going to probably spend a little bit more time on some of the slides that most of us have already seen. Right, so. I want to start off with how we've introduced all of our budget presentations. And that is to remind ourselves, remind the board and the public what our guidelines were in developing this budget. So in 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 coordination with the Board of Education. These guidelines shall be aligned with with the board's goals to be both educationally and fiscally sound. And so we always keep in mind that this budget will reflect prudent financial planning. It's balancing the needs for all of our students, the instructional goals of the district, keeping in mind with our technology needs. Maintaining our facilities and we try to do this with a minimal impact to our taxpayers. So that that's always at the forefront of our mind. So our next slide. Because this is the last budget presentation, just wanted to tell the public here that these are the all the dates of our presentations and each of these presentations have been posted on our website. So they are available here. What you're going to get tonight is kind of a summation of the of the budget. But if you're looking for more details, how we got to this point, you're going to find a lot of that information on our website. And you can see from one board presentation, budget presentation to the next, the areas that we cover. So it's it's kind of an index right there, if if you would. So next slide, please. Thank you, Tina. So we began this budget process and we had to take a lot of things into consideration in developing this budget. And I'll just point to to the major budget considerations here on the left side of the screen. On the revenue side, one of our biggest factors and unknowns are our state aid. State aid represents about two thirds of our total revenues that fund our budget. So that's a very key thing and we never know what it is when we start off our budget process. We hope for additional state aid to help help support our our budget, but we don't really know. And we get our preliminary numbers in January and then we develop our budget as we gather more and more information. And finally, our our final state aid numbers don't come in until April. When the when the state legislator passes the the state budget. This year it was due on April 1st as as it is every year. And the 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 budget this year was about one week late. So we didn't get this information until later than normal. The other thing that we're dealing with on the left side is the major cost factors. So that's one of the biggest challenges and we'll be talking about that a little bit more in some upcoming slides. So other budget factors that impacted our budget are said on the right side of the screen. But the economic climate is a volatile and variable element factor in in this budget. And we'll be talking about the cost of living increases, the Consumer Price Index. We all know how much these things are affecting us at home. They affect the school district's budget as well. Okay, next slide, please. So on this slide, we're showing what the propositions are, what the vote, what we're asking the voters to approve each of these propositions. We normally have three of these propositions historically. And sometimes we we have to go back to the voters to establish a capital reserve fund. And we were due to do that again this time. So that's the fourth proposition. The first proposition is one at the top of the ballot every year, and that is to approve the appropriation, the spending plan of the district. So this 2223 budget, we are presenting totals thirty three million four ninety six, six sixty seven. That's that's the main goal for us is to pass this budget and to show you that it is a sound and balanced budget, taking into account all of our budget goals. The second proposition is one here in North Rose Wilka District that we put up every year. It's a way of funding our buses, keeping our buses on a five-year rotating schedule. We feel like this is a very good plan. We're continuing with the plan of replacing older buses with new ones. So we're asking the authorization for the purpose of five additional buses this year as we trade in five buses. The third proposition has to do with our library levies. And we are, as a district, only acting as an agent, an administrative agent for collecting the taxes on behalf of the libraries and then turning that money right over to the libraries. They established the levy that we do not. We're just merely providing a service here, but including the authorization from from the residents to to approve those levies. Okay? I already mentioned the fourth proposition, the Capital Reserve Fund. The prior Capital Reserve Fund has been depleted. We are in the middle of our latest project. And if anyone has been around the district recently, they will notice quite a few investments in our district. And with this new authorization, we're going to be seeing a lot more investment in our in our district. This reserve fund will help fund future investments in our facilities. Okay, next slide, please. So I always talk about what drives our budget up. What are our major cost drivers? And typically for us, that is our health insurance rates. These are three factors here that are beyond our control as a district, right? We don't, we don't regulate our in health insurance rate and it's a very large portion of our budget. Our salary and benefits, we are people organization. That's where a substantial part of our budget is. It's in salaries and benefits. And health insurance being the largest benefit that that we provide for our employees. Those rates have gone up considerable around twenty two percent this year. That was a major challenge for us to keep our budget to budget increase at a at a minimum. And we will be talking about how we've done that here coming right up. But also another impact on our budget is inflation. The Consumer Price Index was at four point seven percent. Oh, that's on average over the last year. Our budget is not going up four point seven percent. We've made every effort to to keep that increase as low as possible. And so our budget to budget increase is about three point eight nine percent. And you'll see a slide on that in a minute. The other area that's out of our control also is what the district pays for for retirement for our employees. So that is another area that is volatile from one year to the next. Our our retirement rates saw about a five percent increase this year. Not as bad as some other years and that's largely dependent on the stock market, how that goes from one year to the next. And so those were our our major cost drivers and presented some of our biggest challenges in putting this budget together. So on the next slide, please. We just want to show how we've addressed some of those challenges. So we had to squeeze down this budget. We've had to take a look at all lines in our budget and see where we could make some reductions. And so there was basically a district-wide wide reduction of our supplies budget. Not a lot, but every every bit counts. We also took a look at how much we're budgeting for overall equipment and brought that down a little bit. We would love to have more, but in 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 tighter times, we have to take a look at that and that's that's what we've done. We've asked our building principals and assistant principals to take a look at their building budgets and ask them to to come up with a five percent reduction in in their spending plans. So not so much as to cut off us supplies for classroom needs and so forth, but enough just to tighten the belt up there a little bit. And then we've done some right sizing, take a look at our strategic action plan. And that that has also helped and our assistant superintendent for instruction will be talking about that in in just a little bit. Okay, the next slide, please. So here is a comparative look of our major revenue care categories from one year to the next. So in presenting a a total budget, that thirty three million dollars four hundred and ninety six thousand. This is how we balance that budget. We have to present or to the board a balanced budget. What does that mean? That means our projected revenues have to correspond and equal what our projected spending plan is. So this is how that breaks down. What revenues are supporting this budget? As I mentioned before, state aid is the major category here. That represents about two thirds of our overall budget. So state aid is projected to be at almost twenty one and a half million dollars for next year. Our largest other category of revenue is through property taxes. And we have made a commitment to keeping our estimated tax rate at below two percent. Now, if you look to the right here, the property taxes are showing an increase of two point four eight percent. That's the levy. That's the property tax levy is going up, but our estimates based on based on property tax assessments and equalization rates across our seven towns. We estimate our rate to be less than two percent. So although the levy is going up almost two and a half percent, the the rate we expect to be below the two percent level. Okay, and then we have some other categories of revenues that are important, not quite as big, but nonetheless very important to us, including the county sales tax distribution where we estimate four hundred and forty thousand dollars. That amount typically stays about the same from one year to the next. The the amount that the districts receive from the county from one year to the next only changes based on attendance levels. And there's a and Paul may correct me, but I believe it's two point five million dollars that spread out based on our total enrollment or average daily attendance across the county. And so that doesn't change a lot. So you don't see any increase or decrease there from one year to the next. Okay? We are supporting this year's budget because it is going up by three point eight nine percent with some additional fund balance. We are appropriating some of our some of our, if we will, if you will, our savings, right? That's our fund balance. So we are dedicating two hundred thousand dollars this year. Two years ago, the the district was was allocating a hundred and twenty five thousand. So this amount can go up a little bit from one year to the next. So that is something in future years we'll want to keep that probably around this level. It can go up a little bit or or come down a little bit from there. And in the same way, we try to manage our reserves to help balance this budget. So the 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 bottom line there on the revenues is our reserve funds that are used to support this budget. And you'll see an increase there of just under twenty percent increase or about a hundred and five thousand dollars used to support this budget. Okay, thank you, Tina. Next slide, please. Now here is the spending plan, again, a comparative look from the current year to the projected expenses for next year. So our our largest increase, you'll you'll just scroll down and see percentage wise is with our benefits. As I mentioned before, the healthcare was the largest increase that represented almost a one million dollar increase in our budget alone. So that is something that we had, we did take a look at all areas of our budget and it kept those areas increases to a minimum. Okay? So we do have a a seven percent increase on people transportation. We all know what's happening to our fuel prices and so and other areas that that drive those costs. But so that's seeing the seven percent increase and in other areas. Not not so much, right? The interfund transfers that represents money going, being transferred from general fund to our school lunch program to help support that and some money to support our our summer school handicap program. That's accounted for in the special aid fund, requiring a budgeted transfer. And then we have money going to the capital fund as we've done over several years now for our capital outlay project. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as well as as we get further in. Okay? Next slide, please. Okay, this is the that revenue budget and the appropriation side of the budget side by side. Again, this gives you a graphical look at a balanced budget. And on the left side, the revenues, where that money is coming from, largely state aid, as as I said, almost two thirds and almost the third are property taxes. And then those other amounts, fund balance, reserves, other miscellaneous revenues, about one percent of the budget sales tax and payments in lieu of taxes of eleven thousand dollars. Okay, and then on the right side is our appropriation and that's how that is broken down into our different categories of the budget. Okay, the pie actually doesn't look much different than it has in years past, but that that's where it looks like. And of course, because we are in the business of instruction, that is the largest piece of of the pie. Okay? Next slide, please. So this is the three-part budget. This is a required format to break down the budget in these categories of instruction or educational program. What the capital portion of the budget is and what the administrative portion of the budget is from one year to the next. And we're just showing that graphically. Just another way of looking at this budget. Okay, and I do want to mention that this three-part budget and other budget information has gone out in our annual budget newsletter. So hopefully all of our residents are taking a look at that and can can see these numbers. And that newsletter will have a little bit more detail and a message both from our board president and our superintendent. So I I hope everyone gets a chance to look at that as well. Next slide, please. So Megan, our Assistant Superintendent for Instruction is here to give us a a brief rundown of what's happening with our programs and staffing for next year.
Thanks, Gary. So if you look at towards the bottom of the triangle to start, what you'll see is that the instructional programs on the bottom are the ones that will affect the most students. And as we move up the triangle, there are smaller and smaller groups of students that we would be affecting with these programs and staffing. So looking at Drivers Ed, that is a program that we are adding in. Starting this summer, actually, we're going to be having having students take Drivers Ed through our district. And they will be also be able to take it next year, built into schedules at the high school. And another area that we're adding is our instrumental program. So we have found that over the years, our band has, our numbers have declined. So what we would like to do is really infuse some more opportunities for students at the elementary school to experience playing instruments, having lessons and participating in a band so that love for music can start to grow at such an early age. And then additionally, we would like to be able to offer more Gemini offerings. And that really goes along with the music hire that we did mid-year at the middle school. That hire allows our, one of our high school music teachers to offer some more advanced courses for students who are planning on going on to pursue pursue music and arts in college when they go on. So we don't really offer any music lit classes, music theory classes that would allow us to do that. And by making that Gemini offering could be a college course. If you look over at the staff piece on the bottom, that's where I spoke about the music teacher. Additionally, this year we have only had a partial instructional coach at the high school. And we've seen that the other buildings where we have full-time instructional coaches, that it's made a huge difference in the support that our teachers have and the work that's being done with our students to really improve instruction to try to get every student successful and crossing that finish line for graduation. In order to make that a full-time position, our current teacher that's serving in that role is a Spanish teacher. So we would have to backfill the rest of her Spanish role by hiring a part-time Spanish teacher to cover her classes. Moving up to the second tier, we are adding in classes for Geotech. And additionally, a social worker for the middle school to support families and do groups of counseling services for students that need it. We also are going to be adding summer school academic and enrichment opportunities offered through the school district so that we can really individualize for our oldest students what they need to get through their high school program and be successful. And even at our seventh and eighth grade level, looking at specifically what those students' needs are and customizing it. So this allows us to really serve our students' needs rather than joining with other districts and trying to take our resources and divide them. They're all going towards our students in the summer this year. The highest level of support that we're adding adding for next year is a tutoring center. Along with that, we will need to add a tutor in order to work with our students. We have had students who have been suspended this year, as many districts have, due to the needs that students came back from with from COVID with. And we want to make sure that we are meeting their needs for the education that we're required to give them. But above and beyond that, pair that with a work experience to try to keep them engaged in the learning process and give them some skills for when they are going to be leaving high school. So our tutoring center is going to be working along with some work programs in the community in order to support our most needy students at this time. Next one, Tina? Thank you. And so looking at some changes, we do have two reading teacher positions that we will be reducing. This is because we are going to be providing our reading support right inside the classroom for our tier one and tier two instruction. So typically in the past, reading teachers have taken students out of the classroom for instruction by making it part of their everyday learning right in the room. Students aren't missing their tier one instruction. They're able to get extra support right there. And this is going to allow us to reduce these two reading teachers. And it's already reductions that have occurred throughout the school year with some teachers that have left. So it's not going to affect anybody who's currently working with our students. Additionally, two special education teachers were able to reduce. We looked at our special education services and we were able to identify some more appropriate placements for students. And by doing this, we were able to reduce our special education, education teaching staff by two point O. Again, something that happened throughout the year this year, nothing that's going to affect our current staffing. And for the last area, we do have a retirement in the art department. And when we looked at the class load and the number of sections we need, we realized we could refill that full-time position with a half-time person. So we will be reducing point five in the area of art. Thanks, Gary. You're still muted.
You gotta unmute. I am sorry. So the other area that we are have been proud about it in this budget is it is allowing us to continue, as I mentioned before, with our capital outlay projects. So a couple of items listed here under investing in our future is some of those items. So in the current year, we're doing some masonry and window improvements at our elementary school towards the bottom. We're planning on doing library improvements at our high school. We are in the process or have have done of replacing some needed roofing. And our our next project will be tackling our track, resurfacing that with and our fields with new feature press box and a new concession stand with restrooms. So that these are all things that we're very excited about and the list really does go on. We are trying to get the biggest bang for our buck. Most all of these things are aided at a very high rate. So we are getting, we feel a good bang for our buck. Okay, next slide, please. So this is kind of in summary here, what have we done? We've come a long ways since last October in meeting our budget goals. And we feel we've accomplished that and estimating our rate to be below two percent. Our budget to budget increase below the Consumer Price Index. We have achieved maintaining our programs or enhancing our our academic programs. We are maintaining our bus replacement schedule with this budget. We continue to provide for our school safety program and providing, as I just mentioned, for our capital outlay projects. So on the next slide, just want to remind the public that there is material, as I had mentioned before on our website, all of our previous presentations are available there. We also have in each of our buildings and in our libraries a packet of public budget documents that give you more detail on various aspects of of our district. And also we have distributed the community newsletter, the budget newsletter that provides some additional information. And any questions can always be directed towards my office between now and our vote. So looking at the very next slide. We are at the end of this budget timeline. Tonight represents our budget hearing. And in two weeks, we'll have our vote, just under under two weeks, on May seventeenth, Tuesday night. That'll be held at our high school from twelve to nine P M. So we hope to have a good turnout and we hope for the support of our community for this for this budget. Thank you. And I'll take any questions if there's any. Okay? Well, thank you again.
I don't see that anyone has their hand raised for any questions.
Okay?
Thank you very much. That was very clearly put and as all our presentations have been. It's very clear and it has represented a lot of work done by a lot of people to keep the rates the way they are. And these, especially these uncertain times. And these, especially these uncertain times. Uh and a reminder that the voting is at our high school from noon to nine on the seventeenth of May. Uh do we have a quorum?
Uh yes, Isetta is here.
Okay, good. Okay, do I have a approval of agenda? Do I have a motion to approve our agenda? Tina? And Linda? Uh any discussion? And all in favor? This is difficult one to. I don't see everyone.
I see, I can see everyone, John. Everyone has their hand raised.
So now we we've had our budget hearing and we can go on to reports and correspondence now. Uh we have the uh directors um to give a presentation. We're looking forward to that. Thank you, Gary, by the way. Very well done.
So we're gonna piggyback right on Gary's fine job of presenting tonight. We're gonna have our director of transportation, Jeremy Barnes, our director of technology, Lisa Brower, and director of food service programs, Rita Lopez, present their school improvement plan to you. I'm gonna turn it over to Jeremy, um let him get started with everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
See the screen? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. And I'd like to thank the um Board of Education for the opportunity um to kind of showcase and finish up our year with a school improvement plan. So you heard from us twice before this school year. And um this is just kind of bringing all of it together and and all the things that we've worked so hard um for the district and with our staff to um, you know, to really make our school district better. Um so the first first um point for us is partnership, uh working collaboratively with families and school staff to keep up-to-date transportation information as well as strong line of communication. Um this year, um with collaboration with the with the um building admins, um we decided to include in the end-of-year packet that the students will take home with them, um the transportation request forms that need to be filled out every year for alternate transportation. Um this is something in years past that we have um done a mailing and mailed home to to grades pre-K through eight. Uh but this year, like I said, we're gonna include that in um their take-home packets, which will get the information to the students and the family sooner and also save us some uh postage for the mailing. Um the second thing is, is and we've worked on this year is um working with the building admin to follow up on uh phone calls to parents in a timely fashion. Um this is something, like I said, that we've worked on, worked hard to keep that open line of communication with families and and up-to-date information um based on their concerns. Uh the second goal is equity and our um to treat all students and staff with the dignity that they deserve while embracing their diversity. Uh the continued focus on the philosophy that each day is a new day for every student every day. Uh this is something that I've really worked with my staff on and reminded them that, you know, every day is a new day for students. And no matter what happened yesterday, um today is a new day and they deserve the respect and the the chance to um, you know, turn things around and to really be able to uh spotlight themselves in their behaviors. And then also uh applying the knowledge and skills that they've learned um through trainings and different supports to spotlight diversity. Next slide, Tina? Uh the third is social emotional, providing staff the needed, excuse me, the training needed to be successful in dealing with students' social emotional needs. Um a continued conversation with staff to ensure that they're being supported and also applying the skills that they have learned when dealing with students with social emotional needs. Um every day, either in between the uh elementary or excuse me, the high school and elementary runs or after the elementary run, I make myself um and my support staff available for comments and questioning. You know, just to make sure that we're supporting them and everything that they need to be successful every day. Um academics, we continue to provide an on-ride, on-time ride for all students in the district. Um we've really taken a student-centered approach this year and talking through problems with students and developing a plan with the student. If there's any type of issue on the bus, I really have uh uh supported my staff and and encouraged them to to work it out on the bus. It doesn't always need to be a referral or um going to building admin to figure it out. I really empower them to be able to figure the out on their own on the next step. Um and we've worked with the elementary school on two different sessions of the Cougar Values on the bus this year. Um one in September and we just wrapped one up in April. Next slide, Tina? These are just a few of the photos of the um Cougar Values Day that we had in April. Uh the kids really loved it. We we were able to, this time it wasn't raining. In September, it was raining, unfortunately. But we were able to get out of the bus and talk with the kids um and then show them the proper crossing to get to the bus and then proper ways to load the bus. And then we um went over the rest of the values with the students while on the bus and the expectations that we have. Next slide, Tina? And lastly is is uh our financial goal. And that's out, as always, to continue to research the best price for purchase. Uh you can see in this slide that there are the three new buses that we got this year around uh around Christmas time, we took delivery of these three new small buses. These buses are mostly used for out-of-district transportation, those type of things with a with a smaller student setting. Um and then as well, the um Board of Education is aware that we're transitioning to a uh Bluebird buses this next school year. Um providing the budget is approved. Um and we'll be using a new vendor, New York Bus Sales. Uh and the main driver for that is the the cost of the buses themselves that we are purchasing uh do do show some savings. Um but the big driver for us was actually the serviceability um and the the service that New York Bus Sales is going to be able to provide for us. Next slide?
Hello. Um so according to partnerships within the Food Service Department, our goal was working with faculty and staff and students to provide cafeteria services. So far this half of the year, I've had Michael Lewis Duncan and Dylan Sperry, who chose to volunteer as part of a twelve-hour community service class and graduation requirement by packing breakfast daily with our high school staff. And so far at this point, they've actually completed over forty hours each by still coming in after they've met their requirement. Um staff has then participated in For You Friday throughout all three buildings, middle school, elementary and high school. And they've got to enjoy healthy snacks such as vegetable and fruit platters, fruit and yogurt parfaits, as well as a trail mix bar in which they were able to build their own trail mix in a cup. Uh we have provided over a hundred and forty-seven meals for the athletes that have been traveling away by bus. And we actually did a couple more this afternoon. Um on Monday, we provided cookies and punch for the seniors at the high school for their decision day. And then for our equity, providing quality meals to all students, faculty, staff and the district. Uh so far, we have six families that are receiving meals containing breakfast and lunch that moved to remote learning for the remainder of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And supporting cafeteria staff to provide all the necessary tools to produce quality meals. We've provided ongoing staff, ongoing training with the staff, and they're going to be completing a serve-safe certification and some PD. Um it's on the calendar to happen in August through BOSI's. And then in the pictures, I got Dylan and um Michael packing breakfast and then just a little snapshot of the trail mix bar that I did at the middle school last month. Next slide, Tina? For social emotional, we're going to continue moving breakfast out of the cafeteria and into the classroom, making it part of the school day to break the stigma associated with the program. Currently, we have three hundred and fifty out of the three hundred and eighty-seven students in elementary, a hundred and forty of three hundred and forty-five at the high school and a hundred and thirty of three hundred and sixty-five at the middle school that eat breakfast at school. And then involving students in our menu planning, students who earn their Cougar card in quarter three at the high school, they were able to enjoy a special lunch. The students got to vote on what their favorite cafeteria meal was. And then they were able to enjoy select seating with ice cream treats and music and linens, um while the faculty and staff cleared their trays. And by a far stretch vote, um the mashed potato chicken bowl was their choice. So the whole student population had the same meal, but those that had their Cougar card were able to get those upgraded services. Um we also surveyed students to seek ideas for the vending machines that we recently started back up in January. And at this current time, um over forty-six hundred dollars in sales has happened since February. And then encouraging positive interactions between the cafeteria staff and all the students during the time in the cafeteria to model the social interactions and mealtime conversations. I continue to encourage the food service staff to interact um in the cafeteria during the serving line to get their input on the daily menu items because we've been trying out new items to launch in our menus for next year, just to increase the participation. Next slide? And for academic, each student will have access to a full, balanced and healthy meals to give students fuel to perform better academically and behaviorally. And breakfast has been made available um to all the students through the first two periods of the day. Just in cor- um making sure that we're meeting our holding temperatures, whether they need to be cold or hot. And so all students are able to receive a meal, and that has actually increased some of our participation in both the middle school and high school. And then providing continuous training to all the cafeteria staff. I've been working one-on-one, um especially with the cooks, to make sure that um the food safety and portion sizes are being met to meet the child nutrition standards that are set by the USDA. And then also providing training materials to my staff and the faculty and students. Um meal pattern guidelines have been issued to each kitchen to ensure that the standards are also followed for those. Next slide? And financially, operating in a fiscally responsible manner. Um we're use the use of our commodities to the greatest extent possible. Currently, we've used sixty-five percent of our entitlement, um even with the extreme supply chain issues. And recently, I accepted for our district um that will be using, there was money that um the child nutrition had had funds for supply chain assistance. And we accepted twenty-six thousand four hundred and forty-four, four hundred and forty dollars. There are some guidelines that have to be met, but if we don't use all of it during this current year as we're coming to an end, it will roll over into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And then any of the entitlement money that was not used due to supply chain demands where we're relocated to the fresh fruits and vegetables program. Uh orders that did not meet truckloads to deliver to the area L in which we're in. Um I was able to move fifteen thousand, over fifteen thousand dollars into our fresh fruits and vegetables program. And we've uh linked up with our vendor for that. And we've actually got our first shipment this week, and the products looked amazing. Um and then for putting processes in place for accountability of our billing, after uh the invoices are sent out and they're logged, any invoices that haven't been paid, I've been doing a thirty-day follow-up to make sure that all those invoices are closed up. So that way we can get the money paid in. And then, oh, go back, Tina? And then just as tomorrow, as uh most of you might know, is school lunch hero day. Uh we had Amanda take a picture today. I decorated each one of the uh kitchen doors or the wall at the elementary to show my appreciation for my staff because I know it's been a tough year through the pandemic and a shifting back into normalcy's. So um and then tomorrow, I'm going to be giving them some gifts. So, thank you.
So, technology, the first of the five tenants for Technology's School Improvement Plan is partnership. This was achieved through collaboration with administrators, instructional staff, community members and students to facilitate, foster and cultivate individualized learning potential. Over the past year, the Technology Committee met to discuss and collaborate on the Instructional Technology Plan, which was submitted in April. We developed this plan in step with our district mission. The goals developed were fostering collaboration and communication with students, families and community, developing a learning environment that provides equitable access to technology and promotes access to learning initiatives through the use of technology, develop proficiencies that support the social emotional well-being of the North Rose Wilkett learning community, and providing enhanced learning opportunities to create quality academic programming and promote twenty-first century learning skills. The technology team was able to spend a day in each building to assist teachers with laptop settings and functions. We have extended this opportunity to be available in the summer through some professional development times set aside for the teachers. The second tenant for technology is equity. Create a learning community that provides equal access to educationally appropriate, current and emerging technology to all. Until recently, we have been focused on the pandemic and the renovation of the middle school and providing support and hardware digital resources for that. We have now turned our attention to providing some new technologies for the elementary school and high school. Recently, we were able to purchase V-Sonic interactive panels, additional Chromebooks and chargers for the classrooms through the Learning Technology Grant. This will update aging technology in the classrooms at the elementary school and the high school and bring them in line with the technology at the middle school. Okay, next slide, Tina? The third tenant for technology is social emotional learning. Evaluate current and future technologies and digital platforms that support digital wellness and create safe environments. Some of the tools being utilized in the classroom are microphones, audio systems, robotics and digital platforms such as speech-to-text application, Quizlet and panorama surveys. Also, collaboration takes place with our instructional technologists to process what is effective and relevant. The fourth tenant is academics. Technology facilitates engagement and fosters in-depth learning while providing different learning styles and opportunities. We continue to support hardware repairs, software questions and monitor connectivity while also ensuring technology is accessible when needed. Repairs are done swiftly to make sure the device is back in the student's hands as soon as possible. We would like to engage the students to be part of this process to help educate on proper usage and care, which may foster some ownership in the use and care of the device. And the next slide, Tina? And the fifth and final tenant is financial. Being prudent with expenditures while planning for the twenty-first century technologies. We have spent time this year assessing the current district technology and have established a three-year replacement plan for hardware and identifying areas for needed replacement or improvement. With this, we hope to establish continuity across the district where each building is in step with each other. While looking at the current state of technology, we can assess what the needs will be for the future and how to maintain our robust and effective technologies. So that is the end of our uh and thank you all for your support in what we all do. And we can take questions at this time.
Any questions?
No questions, just that, you know, each presentation was very thorough and it's really great to see how everyone's working to promote and improve across the board. Thank you.
I was I was also impressed at how interwoven everything is to give a good education. It's not just the the educational teacher part, but it's also the uh people who back up our kids and make them healthy and get here on time and safely. Uh it's it it all fits in very nicely. And I think you're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Jason has a question, John.
Jason, I can't see him.
That's okay.
I just want to piggyback on what Linda said. I thought it was a great presentation. One of the things that stood out to me was uh Jeremy, going from your first couple of presentations this year, sounds like you're working more in colla- or collaborating with the the buildings to uh to fix problems rather than trying to do everything on on your own. And I think that's that's awesome because it gives you a better feel of what's going on and the students that you're dealing with. But that was a great presentation by all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Uh now we have the next report is from our building liaisons, on the elementary building. Isetta? Do you have a report?
I'm sorry today that I was not able to get in uh contact with the elementary building today, but I will have one for next time.
Okay, thank you. In the middle school, In the middle school level, they have given their. Their New York State math exams and the Ames Web Spring Benchmarking. They have set the dates for the eighth grade dance is June second, which is a highlight of. Their whole careers, the kids' careers. And then also to end the year on June sixteenth will be the eighth grade dinner and talent show. Which the excitement always runs super high for that. They've rescheduled career day and they're changing the format of it a little bit too. So the end of the year, it it goes fast. And there's activities there that especially the eighth graders, they look back and those are the things they remember well. We go on to the high school, Linda.
Actually, Monday I was there at the high school for decision day. It was really kind of exciting to see. How the all of the seniors supported each other and cheered each other on as each one was present, you know, was able to. Say what their decisions were for the future or or not yet. So that was interesting. But also I wanted to let folks know that a week from tomorrow on Friday, the thirteenth of May, there is a cabaret. That's going to be held at the high school cafeteria, which is going to include musical duets and solos and. The admission is five dollars, but that includes a dessert and a beverage while you're being entertained. So. I unfortunately I have a family commitment. I hate to miss it because I think it's going to be great. So I'm wanting to promote it to everybody else so you can enjoy it.
Interestingly, I saw both of those events on Facebook, so I'm glad that they're being covered as well. Do you have anything for Fort County?
Actually, yes. I think everyone probably got the. Email from Sue about our annual meeting for Fort County that's going to take place on the twenty sixth. And we, of course, will have for the first time ever. The New York State Commissioner of Education, Betty Rosa will be there. Our Chancellor Lester Young Junior, well, he's our region at large, he will be there. Wade Norwood would be there as another region of of at large and Ruth Turner, who is our seventh judicial district. Which includes Wayne, she'll also be there. The Legislative Committee has also been working very hard at. Giving questions and concerns that four county reps on the Legislative Committee have put together as. High concerns and priorities for rural districts. So hopefully the powers that be will speak to all of that while we're there at the meeting. That's it so far.
Thank you. On the Safety Committee, I attended that virtual meeting. And they were, they went through a lot of the planning things that they're going to be doing for summer and anticipation of regulations and. For next year. They are also, they were thrilled to hear that, and I I can't imagine how they did it, but. The elementary building had a fire safety inspection and they had no, zero, you know, proud infractions. They passed a hundred percent, which the inspector thought was outstanding and had rarely if ever heard. Of anything that that's wonderful. So that's another tribute to our district and the safety of our kids, really. A policy committee, is Paul here? No.
The baseball game just finished up.
Okay. Well, the policy committee, it's pretty self evident right there. The it's a. Use of federal funds for political purposes and evaluation of instructor programs. And when we looked that over Linda and and I and and Paul are on the committee that we saw no need to. Change any of it. It's pretty much cut and dried in those. Then the other one, the other group of them are first reads. And we have a number of them who are that are deleted and I could explain why we're deleting them is because they're pretty well covered. In educational law and regulations. So if they're covered there, we probably really don't need them as a policy at this point. So that's a first read, so that'd be on the agenda for next next week. Tina, is there any anyone in the waiting room to talk?
No, there no one contacted me.
Okay. Then we can go to the consent agenda and that's. The consent agenda is listed on page two through. Three. And four, it goes from A through D, number six. Are there any discussion, any questions? Could I have a motion to approve them? Tina, Reed, Jason? No discussion. So yeah, yes, for approval. Show hands, please, I guess. I can't.
I can see everyone. The motion is carried. Thank you.
For the split screen, I can't see everyone. We are missing. In that consent agenda, Joyce Freeman is retiring and I spent. A few years working with Joyce and she was a delight to and a spark plug to be with. We'll miss her. And the same with Cody Lap and and the they're good people. But now we have the. The roll call vote on the. The Environmental Quality Review Act for the high school, North Rose Wilkett High School Library work. The environmental part of it. Are there any questions that? Can we make a motion for? Jason and Isetta. Okay, Tina, that's a roll call, so.
Yes. Cinda is absent. John?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tina?
Yes.
Jason? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I wasn't looking.
Me neither.
Paul is absent. Isetta?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is carried.
We go on to good news of the district. This week is National Teacher Recognition Week. And the staff, I mean, and not just teachers, but these are the people who. Make our kids into successes that they become. And I appreciate, we appreciate all those folks that have an integral part, whether they be. The bus driver who brings them in in the morning, gives them the breakfast, gives them social studies lessons. Or special services. They're all appreciated. They really are. And having been in the the business myself and those who have been, we know that how. Difficult a job it is at times, but so rewarding as well. Anyone else have any good news?
So Mr. Bogard, I'm going to jump in real quick, if you don't mind, just to. Just to piggyback on that, it is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. Rita mentioned it as part of her program. This evening that tomorrow will be Lunch Hero Day. The the points that you're making are are not lost on any of us, you know, we talk a lot about. The work that our support staff does and and how much of a role they play in educating our children. And we've highlighted several departments throughout the course of the year. And tomorrow, as you see the fine people that work for us in the food service program, tomorrow is no different. You know, the only one lack lacking in the pictures there is Rita herself. But I think you got the picture tonight as to how ingrained they are in everything we do. And I love the fact that our community sees that and I love the fact that our staff feels valued. So. We're pretty proud to present these folks to you tonight and and again, pretty pleased with all of our staff. Every layer of the organization, people are really doing a fantastic job. So just want to congratulate our our food service employees for everything. That Rita's kind of offered up to them tonight and and how she highlighted their performance and their work ethic because. If you think back to when Donna presented last year, there were over two hundred thousand meals made during the pandemic alone. And this group here, they've worked tirelessly. So congratulations to them for their hard work. Their work ethic and their their perspective on bringing our children the very best each and every day. So we look forward to celebrating that with them tomorrow and just want to thank you as a Board of Education. For your continuous support of our our cafeteria and lunch programs. So, thank you.
Mr. Paul, do you have anything else to offer?
No, at this point, I'm like, we talked about earlier with the middle school wrapping up their math testing. Our elementary students did that as well. We're rounding into the 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 final stretch of the school year. We do have the high school prom coming up next Saturday. We will be celebrating that event locally over at Coloka Estates. I know that the junior ball was a big success after. Couple weeks ago and we had a nice Hall of Fame induction ceremony that same evening. So really a lot of great things happening here. Really hoping to wind down the rest of the school year and stay focused on our seniors. To ensure as many of them cross the stage as we set out to accomplish at the beginning of the year.
Well said. Any other board member have anything? So at this point, we have no further business or discussions and we can adjourn the meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Isetta and Jason? All in favor? I think we have it done. Thank you very much.
Nice job, Mr. Bogard. Yes.
Yes, we're thankful for you, Mr. Bogard.
Oh, great. Thank you very much for your your continued support.